Yeah, the dates are sadly the 23rd to Friday the 29th.
Okay. Welcome to the April 8th meeting of the school department. I think it's my third, second to last meeting? No, no, I'm gonna miss a lot of you.
A lot.
A lot. I did not say all.
She was hoping to slip that through.
Okay, so we're officially called to order. And we'll start off with the approval of the regular session minutes of March 25th, 2013.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now approval of the minutes from the executive session of March 25th, 2013.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, student communications. No Mr. Dings tonight. Okay. Any other communications?
No.
Okay. Questions or comments? From the audience? Okay, moving right along. Six point one is to receive information from Mr. Cullings and Suzanne Buchanan. Okay, hello, welcome. In regard to the Hingham Historical Society Museum project. So thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Carol and everyone. Let's get this set up. I've got a...
You didn't think we were gonna go through everything so fast, did you?
I was... I've had some practice at this... The... This is what I didn't want to have happen. Excuse me. It's been seventeen years since I sat...
Oh, really?
It's... And I closed this building! But you can't keep these things closed unless you drive a stake through them. But, I mean, it was... When I... I know what you all are doing and have been doing for the last several years. And I think back to, what was nineteen eighty-five to nineteen eighty-three to nineteen ninety-five. And I think about the issues that we confronted, Dottie knows, they're almost quaint compared with with some of the things that you all deal with. And thank you for your service to the town, all of you. What I'd like to do is talk for a few minutes about what I think is a very exciting project for the town of Hingham. The Hingham Heritage Museum and Visitor Center at Old Derby. And there are a bunch of slides here and we'll go through some of them without a lot of talk and just to give you an idea, a sense of what this historical society is all about down there on Lower Main Street that has the Lower Main Street torn up for a, what I think is going to be a wonderful change to the streetscape in Hingham Square. But we're proposing to create a new educational, cultural, and economic asset for Hingham. Old Derby Academy. First of all, let me ask, I think, is there anybody here who's never been in Old Derby Academy? Okay, that's a pretty safe bet. Is there anybody here who has been on the third floor of Old Derby Academy?
Who has been on it?
Dottie, Dottie has. It's... And I... So I'd just like to invite each and every one of you to come down to that building and go on a tour with Suzanne or Carol Piles or me or someone and go up into what is our archives on the third floor. Because the third floor of Old Derby was known as Derby Hall. The building was built in 1818. And that third floor up there was when it was built, the largest space in Hingham. And up until that date, town meetings were held at First Parish Church, Old Ship. And town officials signed an agreement with the Derby trustees to move to what was Derby Hall, which is on the third floor. It's a gorgeous room. Our archives, the historical society archives are up there now and there are partitions in the room, but it's quite a place to go. So, our... Just some old photographs. The earliest photographs we have from 1860. 1915, you see the elm trees. You see the steps and the stone wall. This is reported to be Armistice Day in 1919 with the students out front. 1932, and the cars are getting a little more modern. The early 60s, the elms are gone. The muscle cars are there. There's a Corvair right there on the right-hand corner. And I think we all recognize this. And this was 2012 Taste of Hingham, which is coming up next month. So what I'd like to do is give you a brief overview of why the project and what it's all about and how we're gonna do it. The mission of the society is to collect, preserve, and exhibit items of historical significance to Hingham and Hingham families. The society now has collections numbering more than 12,000 artifacts and the collections grow. No place outside of Old Ordinary, the House Museum on Lincoln Street, to make them available to the public. And Old Ordinary is a wonderful place. It's full. Quite a lot of our three-dimensional artifacts, the larger artifacts, furniture and so on, are in the attic there. And finally, and very importantly, Old Derby Academy faces increased costs and declining revenues. So there's some reasons for doing all of this. The good, bad, and a couple of slides of the ugly. Woodenware.
That's beautiful.
One of the... One of the select pieces in the collection. Over 40,000 pieces of, individual pieces of wood. Toy making. Hingham was the center of toy making in America. Wooden toy maker. Military history. And woodcraft. The bad. The building, the infrastructure of the building, it's... Is in trouble. The... Not in trouble, but it is antiquated. Fundamentally, the most important thing is that top item. There is no fire suppression in the building and the archives are there with all of those priceless collections that are vulnerable. Building has electric heat, no air conditioning, it's on assess pool, and it's hard to get to. The maintenance costs are increasing. The plating window there on the right is in the process of being refurbished now at a cost of $15,000. I love that picture. The only way to get to it, or currently, the only way to get to it, and it's even tighter now, was up the driveway. The staircase that was in all of those old pictures was there until yesterday, today actually, but was buried because it was unsafe. And the erosion outside between the driveway at Old Derby and the sidewalk. So what is it? In 1966, this group of people and other Hingham citizens banded together and bought Old Derby Academy from the school when the school moved to the new campus. And the building was surplus to their needs. And it was slated for demolition. There'd been a lot of demolition going on in town. Agricultural, horticultural hall, the library. East Center School. When East School opened, the first East School opened, Center School was there and it was demolished. I think about this time in the mid 60s, people in Hingham began to realize that they're losing, we were losing some of our architectural heritage. And these people and others got, bought the building. The plan that we're proposing and undertaking now is to preserve, restore, and rehabilitate the 1818 building, to create the Heritage Museum for Hingham, to create a Hingham Visitor Center, which we have now in a de facto mode. When the society, when Suzanne Buchanan came aboard in 2007 and we moved her headquarters into the building and opened the doors more than it had ever been opened, people walk up that driveway and they come in and they're looking for information about their families. They're looking about, for information about what they can do in Hingham. They're looking for information about what is in the cemetery. And so we have become a place where people, visitors to this town, know that they can come and get some information. We are in the process, as I think you probably know now, of building a new Main Street staircase. And the plan includes expanding the historical society's gift shop. When completed, it'll be fully ADA compliant, elevator entrance ramp and bathrooms. It will have a climate control system, which is important for two very important reasons. One, the archives, the collections, which are not under any kind of climate control system now, need it. And without air conditioning in the warm months, it's not an attractive rental venue for the society. We'll replace the mechanical infrastructure, create a new entrance to Hingham Cemetery at the end of the project. Because currently, if you know what the parking lot looks like back there, it's pretty difficult to get into the cemetery and that's where people want to go when they come to see us. And the building will be, continue to be available for special functions. This is the back of the building, standing at the rear part of our land, looking out across Hingham Square. And the addition, designed by Sally Weston, about 1,640 square feet off of the building that is there now, will give us all of the space we need to make the building ADA compliant. And I must say, ADA compliance is the cost driver in the project. It's something we want to do, we think it's a very good idea, for the entire town and this project is for the entire town. Just one elevation. This is from the parking lot, looking at it. You can see on the right-hand side, the ramp leading up to an entrance to the second floor. So just briefly, here are the floor plans. You know that this is the ground level. You walk in to the gift shop now. There's a wall here, the kitchen, catering kitchen is there. That's gonna go away. A hallway is constructed back into the hillside to the handicapped accessible bathrooms back here. Elevator, new grand staircase up to the second and third floors. Mechanical, there is no basement, so mechanical facilities go in here. The second floor is the ballroom floor. And this is the main museum exhibition space. Nothing changes. The staircases, the little staircases that there was a partition here when it was a school. This was the girls' side and this was the boys' side. And the plating window was dummied. It was blanked out. The... If you recall what the ballroom looks like, there is a portico here, it says Derby Academy, and that's the entrance to the hallway that goes back to the elevator. Again, handicapped access from the ramp here to the foyer. Visible storage back here, Suzanne will have something to say about that. Out to the terrace, which we preserved and remains very usable for tenting. We'll put a connecting tent here and we can have a 30 by 50 foot tent back on the terrace for functions that people like to do. And the point is that the museum, the exhibition space here will be, is portable. The cases will be on casters so that they can be moved out or rearranged for functions that would like to have the exhibits in place.
So Mr. Cullings, this is where the Festival of Trees?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, exactly. And the third floor where the archives are, this is Derby Hall. You can see the fireplace, it has a barrel vaulted ceiling. You'd never know it, looking at the building from the outside, hip roof, federal building. These partitions were built when it was still as a school. And again, additional space and research space and storage space. How are we gonna do it? The cost of the building is, of the whole project, is a little under $3 million. The restoration and rehabilitation of the building itself is about 2.5. Main Street staircase will be, when it's all said and done, probably around a quarter of a million dollars. And then the landscaping and the Hingham Cemetery entrance will be, will do it with what we've got left over. I think you're probably all aware that we have an article before town meeting after the exciting school fields issues, Article Number 12. And the CPC request or proposal is for a $1.1 million grant funded over several years. The details of the length of the funding have not been worked out. They will be worked out once and we hope that we're successful at town meeting. The... It is for a bond. It's never been done in this town. It's an ambitious project. We know that. Everyone who has been involved with the project has been very supportive and, but it's been a learning experience. We've received unanimous support from the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, the Historical Commission, the HDIC, and the Hingham Downtown Association.
It hasn't been done here in Hingham, but it has been done in other towns.
Yes, it has. Yes, in any number of communities across the state. Bonding has been done. It just has not been done...
I think that's important for people to know.
Yes, it is. Also, while I'm on that subject, if the bond issue passes, it does not raise anyone's taxes. The funding for this project comes out of the CPA revenue stream. So taxes don't go up, they don't go down. They stay the same. We take a little bit of the revenue stream every year to retire the bond. We don't elbow other worthy projects out of the way. And that was key for us. It was... We knew it was an aggressive proposal. And one of the important factors to us was to design it so that it didn't shut down all of the other proposals. And you know how CPC runs with it. Now four-legged stool with historical preservation, affordable housing, land acquisition, and our recreation.
Sounds very similar to our project.
Yeah.
Doesn't raise taxes.
Yes.
Which is very important.
Yes.
For everyone to understand. It's a little confusing, I think, to some people.
Well, it is. And people, one of the questions has... I do get asked, what if CPA was overturned? The law provides for if that were to be the case. And remember too, that CPA was voted in to Hingham 10 years ago. It's been challenged twice and robustly over... The challenges have not gone anywhere. This town wants... We voted the surtax on ourselves. We want to do these things as citizens of this town. So the law provides that should, in the unlikely event that the Hingham overturns the law, that the surtax, enough of the surtax would continue to retire the bond, at which point it would go away.
And I think it's important to point out too, that the town is in such great financial shape that this year we are able to support many projects because of the reserves we have built up over a difficult time. And we're able to do this without raising taxes for, actually, it's gonna be three rather large projects. The fields, this project is very important, and then also the purchase of the Avalon land.
Agreed.
Thank you.
So what's next? We need your help. We need your support at town meeting. We certainly hope you are all supporters individually, collectively, because we need your ambassadorship. This is an ambitious project and financial support. There is a pledge sheet, pledge form in that package that you all have. There is a lot of information in the package that you're welcome to look forward to. This is one of Sally Weston's depictions of what the Main Street staircase would look like. And this is how it all starts.
You could buy it today several times.
Yeah, well, this is an auger. This is a drill. And the project is complicated. The hillside turns out to be sand. And so there are...
It must drain well.
Right. It... Well, yes, we can talk about the cesspool. It's not that full. But there are now eight pilings, concrete, steel reinforced pilings around the outline of the staircase. And this is while they were going in. And that's what it looks like this afternoon. Steel plates behind the pilings. The hillside has been excavated. The wall will come down next. A retaining wall will be built inside the horseshoe. And then the stone wall will be constructed using the concrete retaining wall as a foundation. And that's another shot from today. This is the best part though.
My kids were there getting ice cream and seeing that late this afternoon.
Yeah. It's quite a stage. It is... It's fascinating to watch and there's going to be a lot of activity for the next couple of months. And I think when it's done...
It's very exciting too, for all of you.
I'm sorry. Yes, yeah, it is. So this is what Old Derby looked like. This is kind of what we hope it too looked like.
That's beautiful.
And thank you. Suzanne is here. People have... I'm certainly open to questions and... Suzanne, if you'd like to talk a little bit about the program?
Yeah, you know what I'll do? I'd like to sort of cover two little things and I'll try to be brief. One is where the...
Would you mind coming up to the microphone?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Piles, if you'd like to join her also, you're more than welcome to.
So, I'll just talk a little bit about how the project is gonna fit into the sort of cultural and educational landscape of Hingham. And then talk a little bit about sort of, related to that, why this is such an exciting project, really even for the South Shore and for New England. And I have to have props, so is that okay?
That's fine, absolutely. We like props.
So, what I will start with is Hingham's most, one of Hingham's most famous icons, I'll bring these around, is the Hingham Bucket, right? And I think everybody's heard of Hingham being called Bucket Town. Bucket manufacturing in Hingham began to take place as early as the first settlement in the 1630s. And for some reason, it really flourished here, probably because of the supplies of wood. By 1680, Hingham had 30 Coopers, which are bucket makers in town. And bucket making took off so strongly in Hingham that by the 18th century, the term Bucket Town was being used regionally for this part of the country. Today, Hingham buckets can be found in museums as far north as Ontario, as far south as the West Indies. That's where we've recorded them. We know that they probably exist in museums in Asia and South America as well. Because they traveled all over the world. The point of the Hingham Bucket was that unlike most buckets of the day, it was a flange shape, sort of reversed, wider at the bottom than at the top. So you could stack them on top of each other and they stuck together. And when you put them on a ship or on a carriage and it started to roll and pitch, the buckets stayed stable. They stayed together. Most Hingham buckets, you can still find them on eBay and the web, you can find them at flea markets, were stamped with the name of the makers. This one's from the Wilder Bucket Factory. They frequently came out painted in these beautiful colors, red, yellow, this kind of turquoise or teal color, and sometimes in a natural finish as well. So, in addition to making buckets, our Hingham bucket makers also made various other sort of vessels and containers. This is one made by the Burr family of Hingham Center. These, as one of our educators used to say, this is just a little pantry box, were the Tupperware of their day. You stored everything in these things from gunpowder to nails to dried fish. Some people even recorded storing oysters packed in butter over the winter in these things. They were very stable, very sturdy, and they have a distinctive sort of lapping that makes them sort of specific to Hingham. One of the most exciting things that's been discovered recently about Hingham's woodenware makers is, ties into the fact that there's a very interesting story of pre-industrial America to be told in Hingham, which isn't told anywhere else. Generally, when we think about the industrialization of America, we think immediately about Lowell and Lawrence and Lynn and Springfield with these big mill factories that suddenly start to employ in the early 1800s, hundreds of young women and children in these large noisy mills. And they could turn out tremendous amounts of cotton fabric. Well, it turns out that Hingham had an exceptional ability to produce these small handcrafted woodenwares in great numbers as well. And recent evidence has come to light that during the Revolutionary War, Hingham bucket makers produced 15,000 canteens for the Hingham militias. And this is an example of one of the wooden canteens. It's actually a little bit late and this one is an award of 1812 canteen, made again by the Burr family in Hingham. And one of the things that soldiers liked to do was decorate their canteens before they went out. And sometimes they, what do you call it, fiancee might decorate it for them, she had different painting skills. So these were a remarkable achievement, given the fact that these little sort of workshops were all over town, that it wasn't one big factory in town. It was workshops all up and down Kersey Street, all up and down Main Street, High Street, and Front Street. So this gives us an indication of an extraordinary ability to produce high quantities of goods in these small traditional craft-based workshops through a great deal of organization. There are letters from George Washington to members of, well, I'm sorry, letters from Benjamin Lincoln to George Washington, Hingham is Benjamin Lincoln's home, writing to George Washington during the Revolutionary War, demanding, wondering where they're, when they're gonna get payment for their buckets, or for their canteens that they've made for these soldiers. And we all know that that was one of the sore spots for Washington during the Revolutionary War, was getting the soldiers paid, getting... So clearly, Hingham was no different in that regard. So this is a wonderful story that can be told in Hingham that really isn't told anywhere else. And the fact that we have so much architectural infrastructure remaining in Hingham means that we can tell that story very well here. And a couple of the things I wanted to show, sort of in, as evidence of that, are these wonderful, wonderful books that we have in the Historical Society collection. It's known as the Julian Loring Collection. If any of you have ever researched your historic house, if you have one over at the Historical Commission, you'll see these big notebooks that they have. There's about 55 linear feet of them. And we have the originals in our collection. And what the story behind these books is that Julian Loring, who was a functionary in Hingham in the 1560s, went house by house, thinking in every historic house he could get of all of them. And he documented their history using census records, tax records, birth and death notices, street listings, and then missing something as well, deeds. And so, and every house got photographed, every house got a little map drawn. And one of the wonderful things that has come out of this project, that he worked on for years and years, I'm sure at the expense of his marriage, is that he ended up doing these wonderful little neighborhood maps. This is one of the books for North Street, right? So he would do, take 30-year pictures of each neighborhood, not literally, but this is a picture of North Street and Ship Street right there in 1845. Then you can jump forward to 1866 and you can witness how the neighborhood changes. Each house gets documented along with its accurate footprint. He goes all the way back in North Street to the 1630s. So we know, and he was two own the house. And then when you go back further into each of the record, you find out what they did for a living, how many children they had, what their tax valuation was. It's an amazing, amazing record of a tapestry and a streetscape of a town. Okay, so link that with... So I did North Street because the Otis's were on North Street. And another wonderful soul in Hingham in the 1890s, George Lincoln, put together a comprehensive genealogy of the town. Again, thousands of records. And we have James Otis here, whose land grant from the 1630s is listed on North Street. We have James Otis's occupation, how many children he and his wife had, who he married. And this is the James Otis who later goes on to become the projeventor of the James Otis who was famous in the Revolutionary War. And you can trace a lot of these folks back to him. And the Harrison Gray Otis... And the Harrison Gray Otis House in downtown Boston, James Otis, the famous patriot. So the Hingham genealogy adds yet another dimension of depth to this sort of landscape of the town that we have. The Historical Society contains tons of records, photographs, documents, diaries, ledgers, that add more dimensionality to these records. And it's a wonderful sort of resource in and of itself. With the Hingham Heritage Museum, what we hope to be able to do is pull some of that stuff out of storage and have it on display and have educational programs going on year round. You know, Doty, that we get the fifth graders in at the Old Ordinary. Just when the school year is ending, we're opening the Old Ordinary. And then the Old Ordinary is open for summer, and we get a lot of casual visitation. We started our first official kids' program last year. But other than that, we have no real opportunities for programmatic educational activities at the Historical Society, yet we have so much to offer. So once we get up and running with exhibits, we'll be able to actually host informal family education opportunities, school education opportunities. We had a parent at a PTO recently saying, won't it be great when I don't have to take my kids into Quincy for a field trip, but they can come to the Historical Society for a field trip? We have three exhibits already, actually, four exhibits already planned out. Depending on how negotiations go with Sturbridge Village, the first one will actually be on the bucket-making industry in Hingham. There's a book being produced right now by a scholar who's collected, you know, just about every bucket in Hingham and every wooden toy that was made. That comes out in 2014. After that eighteen-month run, we'll have another exhibit called Hingham Begins, which is an exhibit that looks at the Green Bush archaeology that was done before the train went through. Before they started construction, they had archaeological teams digging out, especially the spot under Town Brook on North Street. And they discovered a lot of evidence of habitation, sort of cohabitation by Native Americans and early settlers. And so there's a lot of archaeological evidence that we can talk about in that exhibit, about how Native Americans and early Hingamites sort of got on and when they didn't get on. After that, we have an exhibit that we're calling The Day in the Life of a Hingham Soldier, which takes a lot of the military collection that Mark showed you. And that one is going to sort of be a modular exhibit that looks at, takes an actual biography of one of the soldiers in the genealogy, sort of puts up hard, shows you what his uniform would have looked like, what he would have been eating. We'll use diaries and other illustrations, written records, to talk about the kind of things that would occupy him on a daily basis, what he was fighting in, for example, the Naraganset War, King Philip's War, the French and Indian Wars, all the way up through the Iraq War. And then after that, we have an exhibit planned with the Harbor Group, the History of Hingham Harbor. So, and all of those exhibits will be rotating in and out artifacts from the collection of the Historical Society. So we think it's an exciting-
Very exciting.
... project with a lot of potential. We've had high school and middle school teachers in to look at the collections. They're most interested in primary source research opportunities for the kids, which is a very exciting prospect, because that didn't happen when I was in high school. So, yeah, and we would love to take questions if you have, if you have any. Did I cover anything? Okay.
I think it was great. Thank you. We can tell you're clearly passionate about your work and about Hingham. And I think you're talking to the right folks. We're passionate about everything in education. And we wish you the best of luck with the-
Thank you.
-with the town meeting. And does anybody here have any questions?
What's the timeline for the building, the construction?
Once we begin, well, we have to raise enough money first, but once we begin, we hope to begin early in the spring of 2014. And then our big goal is to have the project finished by, really, the Christmas season, so we can-
Christmas season of 2014.
Not have a skip in the Festival of Trees and in the Christmas Gala that's become a tradition. It's very exciting.
The Capitol campaign has gone very well. Hingham Journal and Carol Meyer, as you all saw, the big story. But we've been working quietly behind the scenes for several weeks, and we're at the $650,000 level. We have a long ways to go. We need, we consider the CPC grant to be critical, so we need everyone's support. And it's a two-thirds vote that's needed at town meeting, so that is obviously a challenge. And we're hopeful of that. And then continued fundraising, because the $1.1 million grant, again, is a matching grant. We don't get it unless we raise a million one. The money is here and in this room.
Can I ask two quick questions, Mark?
Sure.
So who's the person, just since I'm the liaison for our private fundraising, who's your point person? Just in case I need to share notes. Oh, okay, good. I know the piles very well.
Yes.
Exactly. This is just for my own clarification. What's, I know you guys are the 501(c) -
Yes, three.
You guys do a great job, and all the volunteers and appointed people on the Historical Commission. What, there is no interaction between your two separate groups?
No. No. We are a private organization, and you make, raise a good point, because I was proposing that we have a button that would say, we don't say no.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
You know, the Historical Society is a volunteer organization, and it is, with its volunteers, it does these collections. We don't make rules. We don't enforce rules. We have interests, and we satisfy the interests with the kinds of activities that we do.
That's not totally true. I don't allow food or drink in New York.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There are some rules. Well, no.
And she is tough.
You don't allow food and drink in classrooms either, so.
Well, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and, but people do conflate the two. And it's a, so it's an issue for us. We do occasionally run in, have conversations with people, and it's very clear that they may have had a bad experience with the Historical Commission, and they-
Or the Historic Districts Commission.
Or the Historic Districts Commission, either.
Because you're collecting the artifacts, where they're making sure that everyone, if they're doing a renovation to their house-
Yes.
-are compliant-
Yes.
-with the historical vision of our-
That's right.
Right. It's actually, it's complicated, because there's us, there's the Historical Commission-
Right.
-which sort of fosters the promotion of historic projects in town. And they're also sort of giving some funding towards this book that's being produced on Hingham's woodenware industry. And then there's the Historic Districts Commission, which has to do with what color you paint your house and what kind of windows you're allowed to have. And so, yeah, and the three entities are confused all the time. We get calls at least once a week from people asking, what color scheme are they supposed to use in their house?
Well, thank you for the clarification. And good luck.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Dot?
Just a comment. There's another group, a much smaller group, but with a project, and that is the committee that was appointed by the selectmen after the master plan was drawn up a couple of years ago. And our committee got a grant a year ago from CPC, $100,000 grant, to hire an archivist and possibly some help in the form of interns. So it's been a long, long haul trying to find the right hiring vehicle. In Hingham, it's not easy. We tried it with an RFP, ultimately advertised, and for a position, a part-time position. Of course, that had to be funded. A temporary position is funded differently. And we finally have found a person. And assuming that the selectman blessed the hiring of this individual, she will start work part-time on Friday. And initially, the work will be in the library, but ultimately, the Historical Society is involved as well. In fact, one of the people in our five-person commission is Bill Salisbury, who represents you. But there are amazing things in storage at the library, as well as things like this collection that we brought from Town Hall-
Yes.
-as well as things in the safe in this very building, and certainly in the attic as well. So it's exciting to us that finally, we have a person in place, and that person will be putting together, hopefully, inventories to begin with, but ultimately, ways that the public can access the many collections that we have. And we'll be working closely with the Historical Society.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Oh, Jim, I'm sorry. Do you want to come up and ask a question?
This is a quick question. It's great to see the progress up fine. No wonder, with a lot of the self-sensitive artifacts going from Old Ordinary to the museum, would it be possible eventually to take guests of the Old Ordinary again, so they can come and even stay there? It would be a wonderful experience if it was ever sourced.
You know what? I'm going to have to ask you, just for everybody watching at home, to come up here and repeat the question, if you don't mind, and then answer.
Oh, sure, sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Jim was asking if there, and I didn't, I was unaware that the Old Ordinary had ever been a bed and breakfast of a sort.
It was an inn.
It's an inn.
It was an inn way back when.
Yeah, well, oh, yes, I see what you're saying. Yes, it was historically an inn. You know, the difficulty with historical organizations and our nonprofit status is when we start to get into that kind of business, number one, it's the insurance issues with having collections in where people are living and eating and, you know, that sort of thing. And then also the insurance, of course, with respect to theft. And then, lastly, the sort of climate control issues. And I imagine that the cost of operating it would not, you know, I think will, for the foreseeable future-
It might not be a revolutionary sort of thing.
Right. Would be really, just to stick with it being a house museum. There's a great story of domestic history to be told there. And I think that's what we're looking at, sort of being able to expand that and actually turn the annex into another sort of more informal education center for hands-on activities.
The reason I ask is there's plenty of loose and hollow ones, I'm sure, because there was a problem with all the sensitive artifacts-
Yes.
-in the Old Ordinary. It's like structured, they have a safer home. It's still, it'd be comfortable.
Yeah, and actually, what we're looking at specifically for the project is, there's a lot of stuff in storage at the Old Ordinary, and that's more the stuff that we're looking at moving to the Old Derby. Everything that's on display at the Old Ordinary, we rotate it out every year a little bit, but more or less will stay the same, so we can't move everything out. Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck. 6.2 is here, an update on the bidding and budget development processes for the high school fields project. We have not gotten, we are not complete yet on the bidding process. It's going to be closed. So we have bids due on the building concession stand, and-
Sub-trades are due on the 12th-
Right.
-and the GC on the 19th.
Okay.
And we're still waiting for Gail to finish its review of the two-
Right.
-of the GC bids, rather, that came in on the fields portion.
Right. There was a total of five?
Four.
Four?
Four.
Four bids, yeah. So they're doing, they're completing that review. 6.3, so we'll just keep everybody up to date on that, I guess, as we get closer. 6.3 is to discuss plans for town meeting. I'm sure, I think I forwarded to everybody the email that came out from Mike Puzzo, the moderator, allowing for the first time at town meeting, a PowerPoint presentation. That presentation has to be submitted by the 12th for review. So if there's any slides that anybody thought were particularly effective, that you think I should complete, or, you know, include in that presentation, I'll, you know, take any suggestions you have. Otherwise, I'll be putting it together myself over the next few days. And then I will get in contact with speakers on our behalf as far as associated topics. I think we should be ready on specific topics in regard to the presentation. Other than that, it will be Tim Schoyer and myself presenting the project. And Tim will take the lead as chair of Ad hoc Committee. Any other comments or questions on that?
We should note that the official notice came out today for the moderator's meeting, the meeting that typically is held on the Sunday before town meeting. And it will be held again this year, but it will be at the high school in room 103. Typically, the people who attend that are the various board and committee members, sponsors of articles. But it is a public meeting, and will be open to the public. But simply know that the location is at the high school. This building has some sort of a theater production going on that weekend and is not available, so.
And what time is that?
Two o'clock is the meeting, yes.
Typically, it's just the executive committee that goes to that from school committee. I will bring the list of our allowed speakers to submit to Mike.
And also, we need to provide, usually during that week, we need to provide Eileen in the town clerk's office, the name of any non-residents that we would-
Right.
-anticipate be coming to the meeting, whether that be school staff or contractors or other folks. But she needs the list of names so that they can be entered into the meeting.
Would those be for people that might be speaking?
Yeah, so I'll be entering Bill Seymour's-
Could be, yes.
-and probably Roger Fernandez.
Any non-residents, people who are not registered to vote here.
And Carol, for clarification, we're doing our lineup, but Mike Puzzo can call people at large at the meeting. Because when you just said that, like, we'll have our list of speakers, he'll call in residence if he wants.
As always, Andy.
Yeah, yeah.
I choose who's speaking from school committee.
Right. But when you said, I just want to make sure people-
He likes to make sure that he gets the names of people who are going to present each article.
Yeah.
And then anyone else could be recognized.
Right. Okay. Comments or questions? 6.4 is to receive a summary of meetings and agendas for hearings, which is quite substantial by the mass legislators.
I was amazed when I got this. This is just another example of mandates gone wild. This particular document-
TV show.
-is seven pages of single-spaced type of hearings that are going to be held over the next several weeks on proposed legislation. And there are a number of hearings. I was able to get the descriptions, brief descriptions of the different acts for the first meeting, and I will pass along further, because it does strike me that some of them, as you look through, really deserve our attention. But I think certainly, there would need to be volumes of just the articles themselves. So I'll pass along what I can. But when I first read this, I thought, well, that's an ambitious agenda for our legislature, thinking it was their only agenda. But in fact, these are all hearings sponsored by the Joint Committee on Education. So every one of these bills, seven pages worth, is related to education, and they're categorized in different ways. But this is only one piece of what they are trying to impose on us. And some of these may be very worthwhile, others perhaps not. But just to be able to keep up with them, you really would need more than a full-time person-
Right.
-to simply manage, go into these hearings, conveying the information about what the content of the various proposed acts is and so on. So it's just an FYI thing, but I'll forward along things as I hear that they may be important. I did enclose in your packet tonight something related to that, and that, and there is an act. You have the newspaper article from Dudley, Mass area. And there is an act that a board of selectmen in Dudley is actually proposing a cap on school budgets. Happens to be two and a half percent, but that would be a cap that's same figure, but with a different intent than the proposition two and a half. So that is there for your reading. Obviously, something we need to watch very carefully.
Right. Andy, you're a legislative-
Yeah, I'm overwhelmed just looking at this.
Yep. So you might want to just state that?
The article, I think it should be near the bottom of your pack, is an article about the proposal from Dudley that you might want to pay particular attention to.
Dr. Gallo, just, I'm just having a look at the last page for Thursday, October 31st curriculum. So if someone, if number two, S260 pass, an act relative to teaching the history of working people, what kind of pressures or, what does that put on Ellen and you and Mr. Cacaldi?
I think that's an unfair question at this point, just to pick a random act out and ask them to comment on it.
Well, just if any of these are in act-
It's going to take money and time.
Well, that's the problem, to keep what we have. I did forward to you the ones that are going to be discussed on May 9th. And I'm hoping that our Super Tenants Association will send along similar synopses of each of the other dates, because we really have to read them to find out what they're about. So the association is lobbying, but most importantly, they need to get us information about what these things are, so that we can go there and have an opportunity to testify, if that is in our best interest.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on 6.4? We'll move to 6.5, which is to review the pay rates for substitutes, part-time, hourly, and per diem workers, salary negotiations.
This is an annual process. This is an annual process, I think Andy, I'm sorry, Ray will speak to it for salary.
Yeah, we, we look at this every year, you have a number of pages in your packets that are numbered, I'm sorry, here's six point five is a chart that looks like this. So, the changes are reflected in bold, there are a number of items that cannot be set because they depend on contract rates that have yet to be negotiated, but they reflect a two percent increase rounded to the nearest nickel, and this is something we look at every year, so the categories are, you know, anything from continuing ed, driver education, various types of tutors, English language, home reading, food, well, food service drivers, those are contract rates, but per diem teachers, nurses, long-term substitutes, secretaries, things of that nature, teaching assistants.
So I'm sorry, bold and reflects proposed change-
Bold reflects, proposed changes that reflect a two percent increase to the nearest nickel-
Okay.
Which we've done-
That just makes sense.
In recent years, yeah, in recent years. If Dennis were here, he'd applaud the round numbers, he always likes round numbers.
Yeah.
So it makes for easier accounting, right, John?
Right.
And we, we take into consideration the market, for example, we have inadequate supply of substitute teachers that sort of fluctuate sometimes with the economic times, and so this rate of ninety-four dollars a day for people who work for us for more than ten days is still a good rate, and even though we've kept it level for a number of years, it's still a competitive rate, and we are able to get the teachers that we, that we need. So we take things like that into consideration, and then as John said, some of them, as Ray said, some of them are tied to contracts that haven't been set yet, and others we feel need to increase in order not, for us not to fall behind and end up with a big gap in terms of our hiring ability.
Okay, so do you need a motion on-
Yeah, so now, Dot, and, and the pages that are labeled six, six, and six, seven with respect to the secretaries, those are also included in this-
No, they're not.
I'm sorry.
No, they're not. Those pages are all with respect to the articles six point six and six point seven.
Oh, that's right, those are the annual guidelines.
These are, these are only temporary jobs or part-time jobs or per diem or hourly rates.
Right.
Okay.
So just this one, excuse me, two-sided.
Could I just make one, one other thing? So on the second page, I just noticed that I hadn't rounded up to the nearest dollar-
I saw that, yeah.
Yep.
Up or down to the nearest, you know, based on a fifty percent rounding, I would recommend, you know, that we adjust those, so they were even dollar values, for example, the summer teachers, drivers' education.
Yep.
And we need to do that before Dennis gets back into the country.
So I would make a motion that we approve the proposed pay increases for per diem part-time, hourly, and substitute workers pursuant to the schedule provided, subject to the rounding to the nearest whole dollar for those items that, that need to be rounded.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would remind you that we mentioned the contracts that aren't yet settled, really the only contract, the group contract that is settled is the, the teacher contract, King and Education Association, Unit A, so their contract goes through the coming year, but the bus drivers and the custodians and the par educators and the food service people and the administrators' association are all still finished.
Okay. So the next article, six point six, is to act on salaries for certain administrators as recommended by the Salary Negotiations Subcommittee.
Right, so six point six, you have the three pages, front and back, as you have, as well as something that was distributed earlier, might as well, what you can, to take, to take those.
Well, I mean, there's a bit of one dealing with the principals, it's just these two.
Ray just said, you want me to pass these down?
This is new.
This is new.
Okay, got it.
Take one, pass it down.
And I'll explain.
Gotcha.
Okay.
There you go.
Lots of paper. Okay, oh, do they want, you mean, go to go this way?
Well, I don't know if they, it's up to, it's up to them if they, I don't know if they have.
No, they don't have them, but typically we would give them after this action, these drafts, but-
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, good.
So, so we have, there's seven, one, two, three, three central office administrators who had contracts up at the end of, we're, are we talking six, 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 seven now? Six, six. Okay. But we'll kind of do both of them somewhat together.
You can do both at the same time, because there are two issues-
Six, six, really.
Approving a contract and approving salary.
It's two issues, it's salaries and then there's contracts.
Gotcha.
So we've got three central administrators, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and director of business and support services, contracts up this June, actually, Dr. Gallo's goes until July, which is different, and then-
Not different badges, different, just different.
And then there are also one, two, three principals, two elementary principals, the high school principal, and the technology manager, also with individual contracts, so remember that these administrators have individual contracts that are not collectively bargained, and they're all expiring, most of them had three-year contracts, in one case, there was one longer contract than that, all of which are expiring this year, and so what we have done is, as you know, there was an allowance built in to the budget for fiscal 14, and in conjunction with that, you recall that we discussed benchmarking and doing a market survey to see to what extent salaries for our administrators needed to be adjusted, if at all. The last time a market benchmark survey had been done, I think was over seven years ago, and we felt that it was the appropriate time to do that when we were looking at new contracts and new salaries, so over a period of months in the late fall and early winter, a survey was undertaken, we reviewed that benchmarking information, which is sensitive information because it contains numbers from other districts which cannot be made public in executive session, and based on the review of, of that benchmarking material, the Salary Negotiations Subcommittee came up with a recommendation for increases relative to our administrators, and what I've handed out represents the salaries, base salaries for this year, in each case, for the central office administrators, three-year contracts beginning this, this summer, and going to 2016, the salaries are set forth for the first year, and the percent increase for the second and third years are indicated there as well. There's also a sheet for the two elementary principals, the high school principal, and our technology manager, again, with the first-year salary set out and the percentage increases for the next two years. Those increases, particularly for the first year, are consistent with the allowance that had been built into the budget under the 1,200 function, is that right? No, the allowance was in the fifty-
It, it was after the nine hun, ninety-one hundred E.
Ninety-one hundred E.
It was simply labeled allowance without a number, but it's the very last page of the budget detail.
Right.
Yeah.
So as a result, we're actually going to recommend changes to the salary function under 1,200 to reflect those allowance, the salaries-
Right.
Based on those allowances.
And those dollars would be moved from the allowance page into the salary.
Correct. To section twelve, function 1,200, right.
Okay.
So as you know, we had executive session, we spent a lot of time talking about this, Salary Negotiations Subcommittee met a week ago Saturday for nearly four hours, and we, we had individual meetings with some of the central office administrators as well. Keep in mind that we are responsible for contracts and salaries for the central office administrators, Dr. Gallo is responsible for those, for the principals and other individual contracts in the administration. Certainly, we consulted with her on the salaries for all of the seven that you're looking at this evening, in the context of the benchmarking that we did do to come to an agreement as to what an appropriate adjustment might be.
Okay.
And there you have it.
So, who do you want to take first? You want to talk?
Um, yeah, I mean, we can go, and, and just, just a word on, so the six point six is the salary, six point seven deals with the contracts, I mentioned that we did meet with, with a few of the administrators individually, you'll note that these page, the memos that were handed out under the other category, and, and a couple of the other items, mentioned some minor changes to contract language, some of which is, is, was made to be consistent with other administrator contracts, and there's really nothing significant there with respect to contract language at all. In fact, there were some, there was at least one administrator who requested things that were already in his contract, and he didn't realize it, and he was thrilled to know that they were there, so, yeah, it was, it was an easy one.
And there still are some more to come, Liz, for example, is finishing up on benchmarking, and so, and then we have a couple more principals that aren't yet-
Right, they don't have contracts expiring, but they have salaries that are open-
Mm-hmm.
-which need to be dealt with, and I think we can do that on the 29th.
On the 29th?
I think there'll just be a couple that we, that we would, would take up and vote on that evening.
Okay.
But we, we felt that, you know, given the fact that we have an abbreviated meeting on the 22nd before town meeting, and the 29th is right up against the election the next day, and there's a lot of these to get through, and we had spent considerable amount of time in Subcommittee reviewing these and, and coming to consensus on a recommendation, we felt it appropriate to, to take it up for vote this evening.
Yeah, perfect, I want to thank you, I know the three of you spent a full Saturday morning working hard on this.
Well, I, I appreciate the administrators as well, because they spent a long time working on this benchmarking, I know Roger spent a long time gathering those numbers for us, and, and the elementary principals as well, and the administrators, and that, that was really a valuable tool-
It was.
-for us to be able to put things into perspective. I mean, people talk about, you know, salaries in this town, and we always seem to come below the middle, and again, we found out that that was the case, in, in some instances, a lot more than, than others, and, you know, just like our teachers and our administrators who work extremely hard, we felt that they should be paid appropriately to the extent that we can afford it, and we can afford it.
Okay, so do you need a motion, or are you going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We'll go one by one, probably, Dot?
Fine.
Yeah, so I would make a motion that we approve a new three-year contract for Superintendent Dorothy Gallo commencing as of August 1, 2013, at a salary and percentage increases set forth in the memo in front of you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Can I just have one to the discussion?
Yeah, first of all, Ray and Carol and the rest of the Subcommittee, I think you guys did a great job in doing this, because I think one thing that's very important is to have senior leadership in place, so I'm glad we were able to come up with a three-year thing, so I do appreciate that. I just have one question, I know that if we didn't, weren't able to extend these, they automatically roll over a year, what is, like, when a, when a principal leaves, the only reason why I interrupted you for a sec, is there, is they're just allowed to give notice, or they're allowed to basically break a contract, or how's that work? Like, if hypothetically, you're not going to go anywhere else as a superintendent, but if you've got another great job, are you just allowed to leave, or how's that work?
There is language down.
Language on contract.
There's notice in there.
Okay, so it's all, that's all I want to know, but so my main point was, thank you, Salary Negotiations, I think it's great that we have senior leadership in place for three years.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would move that we approve a three-year contract for Assistant Superintendent Ellen Keen at, commencing July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2016, at the first-year salary indicated and percent increases as set forth on the memorandum in front of you.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we approve a new three-year contract for our Director of Business and Support Services, John Ferris, commencing July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2016, at the first-year salary indicated and percent increases in years two and three indicated in the memorandum in front of you.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Turn to the next memorandum. Now, do you want to, well, we'll make the most, these are, these are really, I mean, I, we recommend that you're, I mean, these are your contracts.
You would be acknowledging that, that you have, that you have seen them and suggesting that I sign them.
Okay, I'll move that we acknowledge the recommendation of the superintendent with respect to a new three-year contract for Plymouth River Elementary School Principal Chuck Cormier, commencing July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2016, at the salary and percentage increases set forth in the memorandum pursuant to the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend that we acknowledge the recommendation of the superintendent to extend a new five-year contract to the principal of the Foster Elementary School, Debbie, Dr. Debbie Stellar, commencing July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2018, at the salary indicated for the first year and percent increases for, for the second and third years with years four and five to be determined at a later date pursuant to the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we recommend, that we acknowledge the recommendation of the superintendent for a new three-year contract for the high school principal, Dr. Paula Gerard McCann, commencing July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2016, at a first-year salary indicated and percentage increases for years two and three as, as set forth in the memorandum pursuant to the recommendation of the superintendent.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, I move that we acknowledge the recommendation of the superintendent for a new three-year con, I'm sorry, one, you have, it should say three-year, but it's a typo, it says one year.
No.
It's a new three-year contract, it says fourteen to fourteen, it should be thirteen to sixteen, right?
Yes, it should, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. For a new three-year contract for Technology Manager Joseph Andrews, commencing July 1, 2013, to June, to June 30, 2016, at a first-year salary set forth and percentage increases for years two and three is set forth on the memorandum pursuant to the recommendation of the superintendent.
I will second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would just comment, Andy had a good question about the termination, all of these have some termination, it was a little bit different in each of them-
Right.
But we use one, for example, you may terminate the contract speaking to the employee, or any extension here of before the term has expired by giving ninety days notice, so with the principals, it tends to be the ninety-day notice, that's in fact what Mr. Bodie did this year, let us know, ninety days, and for, for Ellen and me, it's a hundred twenty days, and John, remember what your termination-
Sixty.
Six months, John.
John, you're not allowed to leave.
Two years, two years.
With respect to the, the secretaries and financial support folks, those are-
Those- Those may be able to come to you, depending upon when we get together with the, the secretaries are not members of a union, but they do have an association.
We typically have the guidelines for those.
Right. And we, they have asked to meet with us, and if we are able to meet with them, that could be something additional that is on the one for the twenty-ninth. Because we just want to keep moving along and making progress here.
Okay. Thank you for all your hard work on that, especially last minute, hard work. Okay, moving along to six-point-eight, which is to consider voting to adopt a resolution withdrawing from participating in the state school choice program.
This is an annual action. It, it is always warranted in a confusing way, but we have to proactively choose to opt out of school choice if in fact that's what you want to do. That's what Hingham always has done. This has gone back to actually one of the aspects of Ed reform. And there are really not a lot of communities in our area who have participated ever in school choice. It would mean that we would have to have room to house additional students. And certainly in the years that I've been in this seat, we've always had space crises somewhere and continued to be tight with large class sizes and so on. So this is something that we would recommend doing, again, notion of opting out of that process. The way school choice works is if we were to opt in, then we could accept students from other communities. We'd have to do it on kind of a, the same basis that, that charter schools accept students, and that is make a list, follow guidelines, not select individuals, but have a process. And dollars would come from the communities that now have such students to the communities that accept them. And so that's another reason that, that we on the South Shore have not opted most of the communities to participate because it can represent an, an exchange of dollars that is, is detrimental in, in a number of cases, could be to our neighbors, so.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we, that we vote to adopt a resolution withdrawing from the participation in the state school choice program for the school year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen.
A second?
Do we need to add for what reasons?
Oh, for, and I would cite enrollment and capacity concerns as our reason for withdrawing from participating.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, six-point-nine through six-point-eleven are resignations. We wish them well. And six-point-twelve is to receive notification of an alternative leave of absence. And item seven are other items as may not recently be known, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. I think I would just like to let everybody here know that I've asked Paul Gannon to go ahead and coordinate with the sewer commission in regard to the fields project. Talked to Mike Slarno tonight, and he'll be giving you a call.
Oh, good.
Yep, yep.
Can I just, on that, mention that I did apply for the USA Football?
Yes.
Grant?
Okay.
It's fifty thousand dollar grant. But I thought the deadline was April first, but I read again, they actually extended it, but I got the application in. John Ferris is the contact person. He received an acknowledgement, email for that. I don't know what our chances are. I'm sure there's plenty of applicants.
Of the applicants.
But it's, you know, it's worth a shot, so.
But how much does it cost?
Fifty thousand. But again, it would be only if it's field turf, because they have a, a deal with, with the company. So that certainly is one of the options for the surface.
Thank you for taking the time to write that grant. And you know what? I, I think we have a pretty good chance at it because you have to get, I mean, there's not a lot of communities out there building turf fields right now. So.
Because they already have them?
Yes, because they already have them. Yes. So thank you. Building Committee report?
Really nothing new. The only thing I would just mention is I'm going to take a tour of the construction of the building with Laura Burns this Wednesday afternoon. She'd expressed an interest in, Building Committee is probably going to have a meeting there at some point this summer to get a good look at, at the progress. If anyone's around and feels like coming down, put on some sturdy shoes, and we'll have a hard hat for you. But thought we'd take a look, and Laura was interested, so we're going to do that. But otherwise, it's, it's going well.
Great. Any other Subcommittee reports? Just Salary Negotiations, the meeting, just did all that. All right, Superintendent's report?
I did leave at your place some enrollment updates. First of all, the monthly enrollment for April one and no significant change there. Things are pretty stable at this time of the year typically for month to month. But I did also leave the second kindergarten report, the second of five. They come in every two weeks. And last time, when I had the very first report from which we make our projections, we had two hundred seventy-three kindergarteners potential. That reflected families who had picked up packets. We assumed that they would return them and added to that the number of children we anticipated having to repeat. So the two seventy-three was a larger number than we've had in the last three years for an entering kindergarten class, because it still is a projection. And at that time, two weeks ago, we had forty-one youngsters who were entering new to grade one. Last two years, we've asked people whose children are not in kindergarten with us, but who intend to come in grade one, to enroll at the same time as kindergarten. So that was two weeks ago. And as of last Friday, which was the second report, the number of kindergarten children projected is now at two eighty-three. We have two hundred fifty-seven students in this year's kindergarten, so that would be a significant increase there. And the number of children entering grade one, not having attended our kindergarten, would be up to forty-four. So we're watching those numbers with, with interest. And we always look for trends, and we thought we had a trend going with the grade K to one. We don't know. This number is down a bit, the kindergarten is up a bit. And so we'll continue to monitor these through, through May. And actually, that second or third full week in May, we sit down and look at the allocation of the, the FTEs that we have and make determinations of how many of each grade level in, in each building we will have. So, so it's a, it's a number to watch, but it does look like a bigger kindergarten this year, but a smaller grade one bump up. So projecting for next year's first grade, three hundred one students at this point, and we currently have two hundred fifty-seven in kindergarten, and projecting two hundred eighty-three kindergarten as for next year. We currently have two hundred fifty-seven.
And typically, Dot, from now through this summer, don't we get additional kindergarten?
Well, we'll have additional, but, but you also have to think that during the summer, there are some that move in, but there are also some that move out. So it's the net number in the end. When we said this year, we bumped up from last year's kindergarten to this year's grade one by sixty-seven students, that was the net in and out.
Okay.
So we tend to get the biggest number of kindergarteners right away. People pick up their packets early on. And right now, what we're doing is chasing after those who haven't returned packets. So for example, if you look at the first column, which says East School, and you look down to the total number of packets.
Returned.
Distributed, seventy-four, while only sixty-one of them have come back. So this is the point at which secretaries are making phone calls and trying to track those down.
So Dr. Gallo, even though the bump ups in line from the two fifty-seven, three-oh-one, since that's a good ten percent less than the last five classes, are you making, would you assume the three-oh-one number is soft? Would you expect?
Well, the three-oh-one is always soft if you look across at row G, because you look at the number of packets out, and that's what we use for the projection, and the number that have come back. So there are a lot that are dangling out there for East School. Foster School is pretty close, Plymouth River is in, but South School is a little soft. So, so it's always soft until we get all of those packets back or we hear that folks aren't coming. Sometimes a parent decides after they pick up the packet, they're going to hold the child out, for example, any number of reasons. So, so these are on the plus side. The, the important thing, though, is that the projections are higher than they were last ti, year at this time. So.
I was focusing more on first grade, but, so you think the first grade will probably go up over that three-oh-one, closer to the three thirty-four that's current?
Yeah, I think that forty-four is probably on the low side for the number of net new first graders we'll have.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Good.
No need for an executive session?
No.
Then I will entertain a motion for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
That was weak, guys, weak, weak. Adjourn.
Can we second it, Ray?
Yes, I do.